That's not a four.
First maybe four.
Four business.
Well, thank you all for letting me have my chair back.
It's the least we could do.
The very least.
So we have one for the military and then. So she's. She's just trying to wait to speak. Not speak around it. Sorry. Sorry, I hope.
There's one thing I'd like to have pulled out of it, but I don't know. The dogs.
Y'all can't turn off that mic? Y'all can't turn off that mic?
I'm not. Yeah, no, I'm serious.
Okay. Let you know.
It's rather a long explanation why I don't agree with it. But I would be the one who gets to run.
Ready?
Ready. Yeah, but I'm not going to vote, but no one can.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for braving the weather to join us this evening. Please be seated and then also please stand and join us for the pledge allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome Pastor Gary Lamb from Action Church to deliver our invocation. He's also a local business owner and entrepreneur in the city of Canton. Welcome Pastor Lamb.
Let's pray. Lord, we just come here today, Father, and we're reminded in your word that you tell us to pray for our leaders, Father. And I thank you for the leadership of Canton. I think as I look up there, the diversity that I see, Father, I thank you for a group of people that follow your commandments. They love God and they love people, Father. And at the end of the day, that's what everything is about, Father, loving people. And I thank you that we get to be part of their vision or they get to be part of our vision, whichever way that goes, Lord. And I pray that you continue to guide them and lead them. Lord, I pray you be with this meeting tonight as decisions will be made that move our city forward. And we thank you for everything in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I'd like to call to order our July twentieth, twenty twenty-third council meeting. We'll begin with a consideration to approve tonight's agenda. Are there any changes, revisions, or motions?
Mr. Grant, I'd like to make a motion to move the issue, and I don't have the agenda up in front of me, of the plant pallet to the first thing we talk about in our old, old business.
Okay. So that would be. Item C, you're proposing to move to item A?
I might have to leave. Maybe.
Okay. Any other changes or revisions?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
A motion is second. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. We'll begin tonight. We have one public hearing. It's a public hearing and possible action on the twenty twenty-three millage rate. Our finance director, Ms. Melissa Forster, would you please? Give us an overview.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This is the third and final required public hearing to maintain our millage rate at five point four mils, which is by law defined as an increase since we are not lowering it to the roll-up, rollout rate. This is a similar presentation that you've seen the previous two council meetings. I added a couple extra slides. This one is just a brief line graph to show you that we are requesting, recommending that the city of Canton maintain the five point four millage rate. This will be the seventh year at five point four. And you've seen this table before. I added a column there on the right side. This is the revised assessments from the Cherokee County Tax Commissioner's Office last week. And I've highlighted a few items there with blue squares and you'll see rectangles. And you'll see where our real and personal property values have declined. And our exemption values have increased. And that is because of a review of some appeals. The tax assessor reports that they received eight thousand three hundred seventy-three appeals this year to property values. They've only gone through about one thousand. So there's quite a few that they still have to review and amend. And most likely that will reduce our real and property tax values. But we anticipated that and we have an abundance of fund balance that we can draw on to maintain the budget that was presented to you at the last couple of council meetings. But I just wanted to highlight the change in values. And I wanted you to expect that those may continue to change. And just the change that's present here in the two columns on the right, the original assessment that was provided in May and then the revised assessment that was provided last week, that will reduce the city's tax revenues by over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That is why we're continuing to suggest maintaining the five point four millage rate as we've reviewed before. The green line represents the city of Canton five point four millage rate. The gray line represents the county fire rate. They have not yet set the rate for twenty twenty-three, but it usually hovers around three percent, you'll see. And as a reminder, the city of Canton operates on that margin between the green line and the gray line. Here are comparable total millage rates of our major cities in the county. And this is a combination of the M and O rate, which is your maintenance and operations plus what is paid for fire tax. And here are a few calculations that we've run through before. As a reminder, the fair market value of the average home in the city of Canton for an owner occupant is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Prior to any exemptions, a city of Canton homeowner would pay nine hundred and seventy-two dollars at the five point four millage rate. As mentioned before, twenty twenty-three, the state is offering an exemption that reduces the assessed value of all owner occupied properties by eighteen thousand dollars. That way, a city of Canton owner occupant would pay eight hundred and seventy-four dollars at the five point four millage rate. Your senior living in a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar home with the state exemption would pay two hundred and seventy dollars to the city of Canton at the five point four millage rate. This is our schedule. And again, this is the third and final required hearing. I'm asking for a vote to approve the city of Canton millage rate at five point four for twenty twenty-three. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have some.
Thank you, Ms. Forster. This time, we will open the public hearing on the public hearing and possible action on the twenty twenty-three millage rate. We have one citizen who signed up to speak, Mr. Bob Stellic. Stellic? Please come forward and state your name and your address.
I'm Bob Stellic, three ten Tupelo Trail up in Great Sky, which was getting blown away a few minutes ago. Some storm that came through there. I appreciate you allowing me to share my points with you, the council member and Mr. Mayor. On the way here, I'm staring at my windshield a lot, cussing at it, yelling at it, just thinking about what I've heard over the last two meetings from Mr. Peppers and from our finance director of what you're asking to do. And I understand that you, you need the tax base and you need to raise money. But as one of the things I'm surprised is that in these meetings, I'm the only one, only senior citizen retired person who wants to stand up and object. And as I'm driving here, it really comes down to two words that I can relate to you people. Stop it. Stop spending money. I mean, I granted, you know, the two-party system, Democrats want more government. I'm a Republican. I want less government. And what you sit there and say and try to deceive us by saying, hey, look, we are, we're holding the five point four again for seven years. That's really good for you. No, it's not because you got a tax assessor over there who's raising the value of our homes. So keeping it at five point four percent is raising my taxes. You're, and I'm glad it is considered raising taxes because it does. And then I think I heard Mr. Peppers, as he went through this deluge of the budget the last time and explained everything that we're spending, everything was going up, more money here, more money there, percentages up. And if you look at your budget, what was it, twenty-two percent last year? You went up twenty-five percent this year? For us retired people, you know, that exemption is important so that we can look at something different. I understand Woodstock yesterday, the day before yesterday, looked at a hundred percent exemption on a temporary basis. But I got to ask about that two hundred and eighty thousand dollar house exemption. If I understood Mr. Peppers correctly, he said you hadn't changed that in twenty years. Is that correct? I mean, twenty years you haven't changed that exemption? I'm here to volunteer to any one of you. I'd be happy to figure out or do whatever's necessary to get that two hundred and eighty bumped up. The county's off on a wild tangent at four, was it four eighty-five? I think it is for them. I'll meet with them on the first of August and give them the same complaints as I'm trying to give to you. But like I said, it's two words, stop it, stop spending money, stop giving raises. I mean, I hear about all these raises that you're giving, particularly to the teachers, you know? The report came out the other day that teachers, the students are about four and a half, five months behind in math and science and English. So I'm not sure they were doing a great job during the COVID, during that pandemic, sitting at home. First responders, some of them need it. There's only one group of people that the city employ that need raises. One of them's sitting over here. Anytime an employee has to get up in the morning and put a bulletproof vest on, they need more money. They need a lot more money. I'm sure none of you have to put a bulletproof vest on in the morning to go to work. I don't have to, and it's thanks to them. You need to give them the money. Now, at the same time, they don't need to be driving around in Tahos. I mean, that's, that's a lot of car to be driving around in in a small city like ours. Now, granted, we've gone from what, twenty-five to thirty-five thousand people. And Mr. Peppers doesn't want to hear anything about lowering taxes or not bringing in enough taxes because he's got a budget he's got to meet. But again, stop it. Stop spending money. Think about us old people who came up here eighteen years ago. We moved into Great Sky. We were thinking, hey, this is a great place to live. Now we can't afford it because, you know, it's not just the city raising their price. Well, the city's not raising it. There's still five point four percent, but the assessment keeps going up, so my taxes keep going up. And Cherokee County keeps going up, so it's no longer a nice, the city of Canton is no longer a really nice place. And so I'm going to end with the same thing I started with and just stop it, okay? Just, just stop it, you know? Think about the older generation that has to sit here. And then finally, you gotta look at what the Tribune said, you wonder why housing revenues is down. Something I'm sure you guys are proud of, they, they pointed out that we now have more apartments in the city than we do single-family dwellings. Maybe that is a key. Stop building apartments and let's get the housing back up to where you can generate that revenue. Stop it. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Dequorum. Please be seated. There are no applause and no reaction to comments in the, in the auditorium. Any further ask, outbursts should be asked to leave the auditorium. Thank you. We have no one else signed up for public comment, so we'll be closed now. The public hearing is officially closed. We'll open up to council for comments discussion. Any questions from Ms. Forster or Mr. Peppers?
Didn't want to comment. I made a comment about the senior exemption, the cap at two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Twenty years ago, that was put in place by public referendum vote. The council does not control that amount. The only way that can be changed or altered is by another public referendum, the vote of the citizens of the city of Canton. So that is not something that the council or the city controls, so. Comments, Ms. McGrew?
Yeah. May I ask Mr. Peppers a couple of questions?
Yes.
Mr. Peppers, if the public did want to cap the limit at another rate, how would they go about getting that on the referendum or how would we go about getting it on the referendum?
So referendums in the state of Georgia can only be placed on a ballot after legislative approval. So ultimately, you'd be speaking to your legislative delegation and requesting a referendum be placed on the ballot.
Is a petition involved?
The legislative delegation have not required petitions in the past.
And would we make that request or citizens?
Generally speaking, the ones we've seen in Cherokee County have been citizen-based. In fact, the, the last two that were approved for other jurisdictions came directly from the legislature and not from the, not from the cities.
Okay. And I have a couple of budget questions. What do we pay the county?
Ms. McGrew, the budget discussion comes up later? This is just concerning the, the public areas concerning the millage rate?
It's about the millage rate.
Okay.
Thank you. How many, what is the millage rate that we give the county?
Two point eight nine four is the last approved millage rate on fire. The county will set their fire millage rate later this month.
Okay.
Two point nine eight four, sorry.
One moment. So we run the city on two point five zero six mils?
Correct.
What if their millage rate is more? And we have set our millage rate, how do we fill in the gap?
It would have to come from another fund source. So, you know, one of the things that, that sometimes gets lost in millage rates is that when you adjust the millage rate down, it's not just on owner occupied property. You're adjusting the millage rate down on commercial property. The ten largest taxpayers that we have in the city include places like Universal Alloy Corporation. So if you reduce the millage rate, you also reduce the millage rate for them. We don't get to set a separate commercial or residential millage rate. I think seven of the other top ten are apartment complexes. They also pay property taxes. If you adjust the millage rate down, you adjust what they pay in property taxes also down. And so for the city, if we go down and the county either holds their millage rate on fire steady or should decide to increase that rate, we have to make up that gap somewhere else, which means, you know, whether it's in occupational licenses, and now we have to raise the license fee for businesses, whether it's in taking money from community development, whether it's taking money for anything, it's going to have to come from the general fund in another spot.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Ms. Wilson?
Correct me if this is not right. I'm a senior and my senior exemption is capped at two hundred and eighty thousand on my home. The difference that makes up for what I would have to pay if there was not a senior exemption would be made up with the younger generation. Is that correct?
Or other property owners.
Right. So I'm thankful for that, but I don't want to burden the younger citizens of Canton with more taxes because, because my senior exemption gets raised. Is that, and that's valid?
If, if properties are exempted, then other properties have to make up the difference.
Right.
I think, I think also, Ms. Forster, correct me if I'm wrong. We're approaching almost forty percent of our residences in the city enjoy the senior exemption? Forty percent of our properties?
We're closer to about thirty.
Thirty. Thirty.
Owner occupied.
Thirty, thirty percent of owner occupied residents are enjoying the senior exemption, which means the other residences, property owners in the city are making up that, that difference. And the city still has to pay the fire tax for those seniors that are exempt. So we're paying that, correct?
So for example, if you were a senior who lived in a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessed home, we pay fire services to the county based on all four hundred and fifty thousand of value in your home. We only collect the tax on that that's between two eighty and four fifty. And then another property owner in the city has to make up that first two hundred and eighty thousand. So if you adjust the millage rate down, while it may decrease the taxes that are paid, the fair market value doesn't change. We still have to make up the digest and what's paid for fire services on the digest.
Mayor?
Yes. Go ahead.
So about thirty percent of our residents are having the exemption. How much money ballpark are we having to make up every year?
I didn't bring those with me today. But I, I could look it up.
Do you know any good jokes?
I do.
Let's say while Ms. Forster was looking that, that up. I do understand the premise that, that, you know, the, the cap at two hundred and eighty thousand that was, you know, decided by the voters twenty years ago. So I understand things have changed. So I understand the rationale of, you know, maybe that should be looked at. If that went back to the voters to look at that cap, I think the whole senior exemption would have to go back to the voters. The danger, and I think it's, it's, it's great that we can offer our seniors and thirty percent of our property owners in the, in the city can enjoy that. The danger of that going, if it went back to the voters, is that those seventy percent of the property owners in the city that, that are making up that difference could decide that they didn't want to extend the senior exemption to seniors in the city. So that is something to keep in mind, so.
Ms. Forster?
For the current year, three thousand one hundred and sixty-seven senior properties are receiving the exemption, saving those taxpayers one million eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Mr. Peppers, does any of this impact our public safety budget? And how are, how have extra funds come in in the past couple of years for public safety?
So in our budget, about five million dollars of growth in our budget over the last five years has gone directly into public safety, police and fire. We have seen additional increases in other parts of the budget for other things. So for example, you know, we, we do have to remain competitive as it relates to salaries and bringing in personnel for positions. We do compete with other local governments for things like building inspectors, for individuals who do fire code compliance, for individuals who work in public works. Last year, we raised the starting wage for all city employees to twenty dollars an hour. Part of that was to be competitive to what we were seeing on the retail market for individuals who are working in the private sector. This is one of the first years where we haven't had hardly any turnover in the public works department because we pay a wage that assures that we can get competitive labor to maintain streets, cut right of ways, cut the grounds at all of the parks, which have also increased in acreage over the last, over the last decade as well.
But the, the largest portion of our budget is dedicated to, to public safety, correct?
That's correct. And I would also note that, you know, we have a total of a hundred and twenty-eight full-time positions or so in the city. A city to the south of us that has similar populations, about twice the number of employees that we have. I was having a conversation the other day with the city of Rome, for instance, they have a similar population to us. They have over six hundred employees. So when we, when we budget, even though we have money that goes into personnel, our personnel line item compared to other local governments is small. Most of the money that we spend on an annual basis that comes in from the general fund and property tax go back into specific services, projects, maintenance, facilities, technology. It's not going into additional staff.
We, we ask a lot of our staff as well, so. And I think we have the finest public safety officers in the, in the country, in the state. And I, I know we instituted new, new pay scales for them last year. And I think we, we always try to provide for them the best possible tools and resources for them to protect them, to protect our citizens. And I know we, we always dedicate a good portion of our budget, largest portion of our budget to, to public safety, to those officers, so. Very proud of that and we will continue to do that and make no apologies for it, so. And I mentioned the five point four budget. We've held that stated over the past seven years, but even going back to twenty seventeen, the, the millage rate was over eight. And again, we did exercise a few years ago, going back in the city's over a hundred and eighty years history. And we, we couldn't find a, a millage rate lower than five point four. So we're doing all that we're doing at the size that we're doing and delivering the services on the lowest millage rate in the city's history, in the lowest in the county and one of the lowest in the state. So I'm, I'm proud of what we're doing and what we're delivering, quality of services that we're delivering at, at the lowest possible costs to our citizens, so.
Could I make one comment on property taxes?
Yes, sir.
City managers of all the cities in Cherokee County reached out to the county manager and had conversations with them about considering doing what's called a local option sales tax. Local option sales tax is basically a one penny tax that is used to roll back property taxes. Where that comes of value in a community like ours is about seventy percent of the sales tax that's spent in Cherokee County is spent by individuals who live in Cherokee County, meaning that thirty percent that comes in in sales is coming from individuals who are shopping in our community that don't live here. So if you have the ability through a sales tax to roll back a millage rate, it takes some of the burden off of homeowners and the individuals who live here with their property tax. The county commission has decided not to look at a referendum for local option sales tax, even though the cities have asked them to put that before the voters. Property taxes are going to be an issue over time. Assessments are going to be an issue over time. Give the voters an opportunity to trade out that property tax for a sales tax, but that has to be called for by the county commission. It can't be called for by a city.
And I believe Cherokee County is one of the few counties in the state that does not?
There are four or five counties in Georgia outside of, out of a hundred and fifty-nine that don't have a sales tax to roll back property taxes. Cherokee County's one of the largest.
So we need to encourage our local leaders to, to really consider that, so. Okay. Any further questions? Discussions?
Do you need a motion to close the public hearing?
I've already closed the public hearing.
Okay.
I will entertain a motion for the majority.
I would like to make a motion that we leave the, the millage rate at five point four for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All members voted for the motion. You have in your packet the draft minutes for our meeting on July sixth. Are there any changes, revisions, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion approved and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Do we have any, any announcements or informational items this evening? Okay, we will now our ten-minute public input. We had one resident sign up to speak. Just a reminder that we can allow input tonight on any topic except for the zoning topic of the social club. So by law, we're not allowed to accept any public comment on that since the public hearing has closed. And Shannon Wymer, come forward, state your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Shannon Wymer. I live at one four six Sequoia Circle. Love this city, by the way. First Friday is one of my little guys and my favorite thing to do. It's the first time I've come to a meeting like this, but I've been in here to train to be a pole worker. Great facility. Y'all are doing a great job. I just want to clear a few things up. I actually thought I was coming to speak about the millage. I went to the delegation meeting last Thursday that was held by the Cherokee County delegation. I know you've already voted on it, but I just, for the sake of everyone understanding some things, I just wanted to throw some, some things out there. Mayor Grant, have you considered approaching Mandy Ballinger, who was our representative, or Senator Albers about changing some of the tax code? Because you're right, legislation is what's required. At the delegation meeting, it was spoke, they spoke about a two thousand ten tax law that was put in when we were, the recession came. And as property tax values were assessed, it was difficult because they were dropping so quickly. So there was a freeze. Well, what we learned at the delegation meeting is that there's actually a five-year lag, up to a five-year lag, three to five-year lag on property tax assessment values. Which brings me to all the high-density housing that is coming into Canton. This is a big problem. If we have a very old thirteen-year-old law that has been in legislation that is missing an opportunity for what a property that was maybe sold for a half a million dollars is now worth fifty or sixty million with a whole apartment complex on it, we are, there's a huge gap in the millage. And just to clear the record, the SPOST was put into place to lower the millage rate through the school district. So there is, there are some other things that are happening. Some of the things you guys said up here I don't agree with, but I'm not going to go back and forth. But I would like to talk to you personally about how to fix legislation. It is an election year coming up, and I'm certain you want to address that issue before your constituents in the city. Because we love Canton just as much as y'all do, right? So one other thing, Caldwell did publicly announce at that delegation meeting that he would cap the senior rate and find a way to do that in Woodstock. While Woodstock does have a little bit higher of a millage rate, they are making that work. So I would consider giving him a call. He's making that happen. He's a great dude. And I just have one more thing. How many here in the audience are here to oppose the social club? Please stand.
I'm sorry.
Mayor, Council, I apologize for being out of order, but I was approached after the, the meeting started with one more individual that was late because of weather that has asked for council to consider to allow, to make a public input if it's your will.
It's council's pleasure to... Is it on what topic? Is there a particular topic?
I have informed the individual that the, that she cannot speak to about the social club.
Okay. We're going to let the person come forward, but if they speak on the social club, we'll be asked to be escorted out of the room, so.
By the way, that's a beautiful sign behind you. I'm sure it was a great use of taxpayer dollars. My-
Your name and address, please.
My name is Samantha Baker. My address is eleven seventy Lightfoot Drive, Canton, Georgia, three zero five. You're probably going to have me escorted out because it's not necessarily about the social club. It is more about what I heard, saw in the previous city council meeting from the city council members I see before me. And so here I go. I had to watch as a citizen of this state was treated horribly by council members who had disdain and condescension written all over their faces. And as far as I could tell, the only concerns anybody here had was that man's religion. And I urge you all very, very hard, I urge you all to consider what you will be putting at stake with the possibility of a civil rights lawsuit with the way that that man was treated last city council meeting. I encourage you all to consider that. Go back and watch the video. Go back and watch the city council meeting. He has a case, and I would be very, very careful with how you guys acted. That was the absolute first time in my citizenship as a citizen of Canton, Georgia, that I was thoroughly embarrassed and ashamed to be a citizen of this city because of the way you all looked at him and the way you all treated him, as if he was the worst of his faith, as if he was the worst of his faith. It was like, it was like somebody looking at me and saying that because I follow Jesus, I must be a member of the Westboro Baptist Church. It was disheartening. It was horrible, and it made me feel awful. And it made us all look like the backwoods hillbillies that the rest of the world sees us as. And I felt horribly ashamed. That's all I had to say.
We'll move into old business. And we have moved item C up to the first item, discussion of possible action on the Unified Development Code Ordinance Amendment of Table one oh three dash one one for the City of Canton Plant Palette. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you stated, this is an ordinance amendment to adopt a new plant palette that has been recommended by Hughes, Goodall, Larry and Ryan, along with our Sustainability Committee. There have been several trees that have been removed from the list that are non-native or invasive species. There have been several that have been added. You have been provided with the proposed list, and this is an action meeting tonight where we are requesting action, one way or the other, to adopt the ordinance amendment change.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. We held our public hearing on this ordinance change at the last meeting. We've discussed this, I think, on a couple of occasions. Comments, questions for Mr. Green? Ms. McGrew?
I'd like to make a motion if no one has any questions or comments.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance amendment of Table one zero three dash one one for the City of Canton Plant Palette redo.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Next item, discussion of possible action on case CUP two three zero three dash zero zero seven, request to operate the social club at four zero four three Marietta Highway, Suite one hundred. Mr. Green?
Thank you again, Mayor, members of council. As you're aware, the public hearing took place at the last council meeting. You heard comments from citizens. There were several things asked of the applicant. He has stated that this will certainly only be a social club. In our last staff report, the staff recommended approval of this application with four conditions. If you would like, I can read them to you for the record.
Yes, please.
All right. Should this application be approved, the staff would suggest to follow conditions for consideration. The approval is for this entity only, Eden Community Garden Centers, Inc. Number two, there should be no outside loudspeakers or any other device that is used for the amplification of voice or music. Number three, the property shall only be used as described in the applicant's letter of intent. Number four, the occupancy load, as determined by the City of Canton Fire and Life Safety Manager, shall be adhered to at all times.
Thank you, Mr. Green. So this item, any questions, a discussion from Mr. Green? Any questions from Mr. Green? Ms. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is possibly a question for city attorney, Mr. Rusbridge or Mr. Peppers. For the record, is it correct that legally, all this council is being asked to consider is the following? Is this applicant's requested usage an appropriate use for the specific space?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Thank you, Mr. Rusbridge. Questions, comments? Ms. McGrew?
I'd like to make a motion, please.
Yes, please.
Upon recommendation of the staff and including the conditions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the case CUP two three zero three dash zero zero seven.
A second.
A motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
We have four ayes, one nay, and motion passes. Okay. We'll move on to item B. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to exit now who are just here for that case, you're welcome to do so at this time. Next item, discussion of possible action on fiscal year 2024 proposed budget and fee schedule. Ms. Forrester? Welcome back.
We've already had our public hearing on the budget, and we've had some work sessions. This meeting, I'm just asking for a vote to approve the proposed budget, which is, which is fully available online, and the 2024 revised fee schedule. And to address a few questions that were brought up earlier, the total budget for all funds for the City of Canton for fiscal year 2024 is recommended to be eighty-two million, three hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and one dollars. The general fund is at twenty-five million, four hundred, five hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And of that general fund budget, fifty-five percent is directly paid for police and fire services. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So again, fifty-five percent of the general fund goes to police and fire services?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, okay. Any questions again from Ms. Forrester?
I don't have any questions, but if nobody else does, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Tull.
I move that we approve the fiscal year 2024 proposed budget and fee schedule. Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forrester. Moving along. Item D, discussion of possible action on public art master plan by Designing Local. Theater Events and Facilities Director, Kristen Norton-Green, welcome.
Name, thank you. At your last meeting, you saw a presentation from Josh Lapp of Designing Local about our recommended public art master plan. So we are here tonight to request possible action from you. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Green. So again, we had the great presentation at our last meeting. Been working on this for quite a while. A lot of great work has gone into that. Thanks to everyone who contributed to this. Questions, comments? Ms. Schmidt?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the public art master plan presented by Designing Local.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion. Congratulations. Look forward to getting this going. Item E, discussion of possible action to award Task Order Ten to Black and Beach for construction management services for the raw water intake screen improvements project at the water treatment plant in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Mr. Otavian or Ms. Watson? I should look up what I'm-
Dave is not in town, so I told him I'd take over for him.
Glad to have you.
The city received bids for the raw water intake screen project on July sixth. This task order is for the construction management with Black and Beach. And staff would recommend awarding the Task Order Ten to Black and Beach for construction management services for the water intake string improvements in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Now I'll try my best to answer any questions you have.
Okay. And we discussed this at the last meeting, and are there any questions for Ms. Watson?
If there are no questions, I'd like to make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Waterman?
I'd like to make the motion to approve and award Task Order Ten to Black and Beach for construction management services for the raw water intake screen improvements project at the water treatment plant in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion. One item of new business, discussion to award the raw water intake screen project at the water treatment plant to J.S. Heron Company in the amount of two million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. So the city did receive two bids, and I believe that you have those, a bid result summary sheet in your packet. And staff will be making a recommendation, recommendation to award the contract to the parent low bidder, J.S. Heron Company, in the amount of two million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I know we're just discussing this tonight, Ms. Watson, and obviously it's a, it's a large amount. Could you just give us a, a brief, and I know you're filling in for Mr. Otavian, but I, I, I trust you. Just a, a brief kind of overview of what the water intake screens do and essentially why they're important for this amount of money, so.
So this raw water intake screen is the intake that is in the Etowah River. So it's the intake area. I don't, I'm not really familiar with what this project entails, but I imagine that there is some sort of screening, a pump that will take the water from the river to the water plant to be treated for drinking water.
Okay, okay, great. And I believe we received two bids from, out of the five companies, so. I think there's about a half a million dollar difference in the bids between the low and the high bidder, I think, so.
Correct.
Okay. Any further questions from Ms. Watson? Again, this is something we'll, I believe we'll have a contract to consider at the next meeting?
I'm sorry.
I believe we'll have a contract to consider at the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions?
I do have one question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Tull.
Might be elementary, but the previous item E is also relative to a raw intake screen improvement. So what, what are the differences between these two? And Ms. Watson, I'm not putting you on the spot. I know Mr. Peppers probably knows the answer to that if you don't.
So Black and Beach is the engineering company that did the design work. And that, item D is for the construction management services. So it would be the inspection services and making sure that the contractor abides by the, the bid documents.
Crystal clear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Watson.
Thank you.
Mr. Peppers?
Just briefly, you have the operations report up here for June. We'll have that up on the website. And we have concert this weekend at Etowah River Park. That's really all I have unless you have any questions for me.
No, big concert, so. Any questions for Mr. Peppers? Awesome. I have nothing for you this evening, so for that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? We are adjourned. Everyone be safe driving home.